Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oakland City Planning Commission for Thursday, October 25. Now would be a good time to turn off your cell phone. I'm going to do that myself. If you have, if there's an item on the agenda to which you would like to speak, you'd like to be heard, there are forms like this out on the table in the hallway outside. If you'd fill one out, it just helps us a little bit with that military efficiency I was talking about and also with our paperwork. The first thing we're going to do today is welcome our new Ward Seven Planning Commissioner, Kamal Pannington. We're so pleased to have you with us today.
Thank you.
And we're going to receive the minutes of our last meeting.
Motion to receive minutes.
Second.
Motion, second, to receive minutes of the last meeting. Cast your votes, please. Gradually, all of us? Yes, no, yes? Very good, thank you. Mine's not on? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, okay. One more time, you guys. Thank you. For those of you who might be here for the first time today, the way we do this, we have a little bit of stuff we have to do here at the beginning, housekeeping. But then, when we get to the items to be heard, we'll ask each applicant to come forward, give us their name and address for the record, tell us what it is that they're here to request. We may have questions of them. We may discuss amongst ourselves a little bit. We'll ask if there's anyone else here to speak on the item. If so, that person will also come forward, do the same thing, give us their name and address, tell us why they're here. The commissioners may or may not ask questions of those individuals, and we may have some discussion amongst ourselves, and then each item will be called to a vote. So, let's start that process. We have continuance requests.
There were three requests for uncontested continuance for Item B-20 on your agenda for SPUD 1082, Item B-21 for SPUD 1085, and Item B-22 for SPUD 1086, all to be deferred to November 8.
Is there anybody here who wanted to be heard on any of those items today, or thought they were going to be heard on any of those items today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the continuances as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue Items 20, 21, and 22. Would you cast your votes, please? No?
Sorry. Madam Chair, David Box, 522 Callacord Drive. The last item, SPUD 1086, our request is actually to the meeting in December. It may have been a late request.
I'm sorry. What is that date? December the 13th.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I have a motion and a second to continue Items 20, 21, and 22. Would you cast your votes, please? They are continued.
We also received one new request for continuance for Item A-1 on the agenda for PUD SP 1577A to defer that to November 8.
Is there anybody here today who thought they were going to be heard on that item? I'll take a motion.
Move the continuances as read.
I have a motion, a second, to continue Item 1. Would you cast your votes, please? It is continued. I'm sorry, to what date?
November 8.
It's not that one. Are there any additional requests for continuance? There is one item on the agenda that I think the consensus of the commission is that it's not ready to be heard today, and that would be Item Number 17. It has a plethora of technical evaluations that are outstanding. We generally make it our policy not to deal with these kind of changes around the horseshoe. I understand that the applicant may be ready to agree to the continuance, to the technical evaluations. Is that accurate?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Ernie Ish, 14848 Bristol Park Boulevard. We've read all of the TEs, and they're primarily concerned with language and the way that we wrote it, and we concur with all the technical evaluations, and so we would like to be heard today.
You know, I think it's good that you are in agreement with technical evaluations, but that does not resolve my issues with the application. I think that there's more to it than just the fact that, that...
I mean, frankly, your document wasn't ready to be submitted, and, you know, it shouldn't be our job to kind of take a wholesale rewrite of your actual SPUD document with 16 TEs that are really, as you rightly say, Ernie, they're, they look like they're mostly adding notes, et cetera, but that's not our job. That's not the city's job. So, I think maybe incorporate these into your document and bring it back in two weeks. That'd be my preference, my personal preference.
And that would be my recommendation as well.
We'll abide by the decision of the commission.
So, I'll take a motion to continue Item Number 17. For two weeks, is that going to be enough for you to...
Yes.
I'll make a motion to continue Item Number 17, PUD 1686, to the November 8, 2018 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to continue Item Number 17 until November the 8. Would you cast your votes, please? It is continued. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I should have asked. We do have someone who signed up to speak. We've just continued this item. Mr. Webster?
Yes.
Is that all right with you?
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
So, it's been continued until November the 8. Mr. Ish, Mr. Webster, if you two would like to talk, now might be a good time. We're going to kind of rearrange the order of our cases requiring separate votes. Are we done with continuances? Has everybody done what they want to do with that? Nobody else has anything they want to suggest or request? No? Oh, I'm sorry, consent. Yes, let's do consent. The consent docket are items that generally are fairly routine, that they are not subject to much controversy or concern, that they are where they need to be. So, we vote on them as a block, but if there are any that need to be pulled out and voted on separately, we can do that, as we have done by continuing Item 1. So, we're really talking about Items 2, 3, and 4. Would you read those for us?
Sure. For the record, Item 2 is Case PUD SP-1584A for a specific plan pursuant to PUD 1584. Item 3 is PUD SP 1515A. That's for a specific plan pursuant to PUD 1515. And Item 4 is Case C 7035, the final plat of Harvest Acres.
Is there anybody who thought they wanted to be heard on any of those items today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move the consent docket as read. Items 2, 3, and 4.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Items 2, 3, and 4. Would you cast your votes, please? They are approved. So, no, I'm sorry. We're going to rearrange the order a little bit. We have an item for which staff is going to give us a little bit of a presentation, Item Number 19 on the agenda.
So, we'll move Item 19 to the beginning, which is an introduction of some ordinance changes to our downtown design districts and urban design district, and setting the ordinance for a recommendation by the Planning Commission on December 13. And Lisa Cronister with the Planning Department is going to outline the contents of that ordinance for us.
Okay, good afternoon. Lisa Cronister, Planning Department, here to talk to you about ordinance amendment that will affect the downtown and urban design districts ordinance. I manage the current Planning and Urban Design Division of the Planning Department. This division manages all of the city's design review districts, downtown, brick town, urban design, and historic preservation. The downtown design district actually comprises three sub-districts and is generally the area between the river and Northwest 13th, between Claussen and Broadway Avenue to the east. Our urban design districts are scattered around the urban core, generally represent some of our most well-known character districts, Capitol Hill, Plaza District, Asian District. This map is outdated because you may remember that the Lincoln Boulevard overlay was passed a couple of meetings ago. So, that's, we need to update our map to reflect a newer urban design district. The code revisions before you today stem from about five, five main bullet points. One is it incorporates changes resulting from the Cottage District stakeholder outreach that we started about two years ago. We also did some outreach with the Automobile Alley Association regarding some updates to their guidelines. Staff keeps a running list of minor code amendments that we want to pick up the next time we touch the code. This includes some of those. It removes some conflicting and duplicate information in the urban design section, and it changes most fence regulations to guidelines. And I'll go into a little more detail of each of these. The Cottage District, about two years ago, we began some stakeholder outreach to determine if and how the downtown development framework needed to be incorporated into the code, if any changes to the code were, were needed to correspond with the DDF. To do that, we analyzed existing conditions, you know, the types of development that are happening in the Cottage District in the past several years. We had several stakeholder meetings, surveys, one-on-ones with a variety of interested parties, and came to some conclusions. So, the recommendations of that effort were to, one, adopt the downtown development framework by reference in the code. The design review committees had already adopted it as a reference guideline, but if it's in the code, then it's easier and more clear for applicants that it is to be applied to their projects. We eliminated a design guideline that required floor elevations to be set at 24 inches above grade. The 24 inches is a, is a design typology of the older home, not the more contemporary homes that have been desired in cottage area over the last several years. Changed the setback requirement to be consistent with any uses. Right now, the set, there's a different setback for single and two-family homes as opposed to multi-family townhomes, but the feeling of stakeholders and of the commission, Urban Design Commission, was that it need, that the setback should be the setback regardless of your use. It changes many of the fence regulations to guidelines. Right now, the downtown fence regulations are unusually detailed. They talk about picket spacing, they talk about the size of the pickets, which removes a lot of desired design flexibility from a lot of applicants. And for those members who have served on Board of Adjustment, you've seen a lot of variance requests related to fences, in part because of that. So, we think that moving all of the, most of the regulations to guidelines will give everybody flexibility, but still achieve the quality and transparency that we want to see out of fences. And then, we've added some language to make it clear that staff has the ability to issue some administrative approvals in the Cottage District. Right now, the language isn't crystal clear. Automobile Alley, the recommendation is also that we adopt the downtown development framework by reference in the code, also that we adopt the building conservation and rehabilitation guidelines. Again, both of these documents had been adopted by Downtown Design Review as supplemental guidelines, but once they're embedded in the code, it'll be easier to find. Both of the downtown development framework and the building conservation guidelines cover information that was originally captured in a document called the Automobile Alley Guidelines for the Next Century. The only thing it did not capture from that older document was a, was the appropriate heights, what heights are appropriate in, next to some of the more historic buildings of Automobile Alley. So, to capture that, this ordinance will specify a certain maximum building height north of Sixth Street and a different maximum height south of Sixth Street. And again, that's to, to recognize and support the historic buildings in the, in the core of Automobile Alley. General downtown changes. We're moving some of the language about expiration dates. They're in an odd location right now. It's difficult for anybody to find, even staff has a hard time finding it. We're clarifying that chain link fencing is really not appropriate for any street frontage in downtown. Again, changing most of the fence regulations to guidelines, and we're deleting, there's still a reference in parts of the code to the Streetscape Master Plan, which, which is no longer in use, has not been in use for years. Urban design, a few years ago, when urban design, when Paseo, the heart of Paseo, was moved from review by Historic Preservation Commission to review by the Urban Design Commission, there was some, the design guidelines were not, the HP design guidelines were not struck from the ordinance, which has caused quite a bit of confusion over the last several years. So, we're striking that, but the, but there is replacement language that's already in the code. Then, so, since our various stakeholder outreach processes, we have gone to, met with Downtown Design Review Committee. They made their recommendation in August. Oops. Urban Design Commission made their recommendation in September, and then we had a couple of presentations to the Planning Commission, Urban Development Committee, and they recommended that it be set for introduction. So, that's why I'm here today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, we do have someone signed up to speak. Do we have any questions we want to ask staff before I... Is it Bleakley or is it Blakely?
Bleak, like the weather. Good afternoon. Bill Bleakley, 607 Northwest 7th. I'm appearing today as the newly elected president of the Sosa Neighborhood Association, which encompasses the Cottage District. We just want to thank you for incorporating the plans to standardize the setback within the Cottage District. At yesterday's UDC meeting, we had a wonderful experience of the neighborhood and a significant developer coming together and communicating on this issue. It's a project at Eighth and Saint and Francis, and it's a nine-townhouse development. The developer is accommodating the residential setbacks for his project, and will have to then get a variance before the Board of Adjustment to accomplish this, and with these changes, that final step will not be necessary. So, thank you very much.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Blakely? No, I'm glad to hear you say that, that they're going to accommodate the residential setbacks, since there was some suggestion at our last study session on this, that if we did this, that somehow it would complicate development. So, I'm glad to hear that that's being done. I'll take a motion. If we don't have any discussion, we want to... So, yes, the action we're taking is to actually set this down for hearing.
Just want to commend staff for their work on this. We attended a couple of study sessions on it, did a great job. This needed to be done. I'm glad it's finally being done, so, great job, at least, to you and your team. Yep. If there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to set the item for public hearing on December 13, 2018.
Second, the motion.
I have a motion and a second to set the item down for hearing on December 13. Cast your votes, please, and it will be set for hearing.
Back to the normal order on the agenda. Item Number 5 is Case C 7009, the preliminary plat of Prairie Estates.
Good afternoon. Brad Reed with Crafton Toll, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a preliminary plat that was continued from a previous meeting until we took the PUD to City Council. The PUD was approved at City Council. In that time, we agreed to 30,000 square foot lot size, which was adjusted for this preliminary plat from half acre. We added some stubs according to some staff recommendations, and we agree with all other TEs, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did we talk before about what PUD 904 is?
Um, PUD 904? Oh, it's a, it's owned by the city. It's a, the cell tower, I believe.
Is there anyone else who wants to be heard on this item today? Commissioners? Comments, questions, concerns? A motion?
I make a motion for approval subject, subject to the technical amendments outlined.
I have a motion and a second to approve Item Number 5, subject to the technical evaluations. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item Number 6 is SP 511. This is a special permit to allow a drinking establishment in the DTD 2 zoning district at 814 West Sheridan Avenue.
Phil Pham, 814 West Sheridan. You have any questions?
Tell us what you're asking us for here today.
We're asking for a special use permit to, for a drinking establishment, sit down.
I feel like there ought to be balloons and confetti. This is our first...
I get balloons?
Under the new, under, under our new...
Not really, not really.
Our new regulatory process. This is our first special permit application, so... Do we have any comments or questions? Is there anybody else here who wants to be heard on this item? Commissioners?
If not, I am happy to make a motion to recommend approval of the item to City Council.
I have a motion, a second, to approve Item Number 6. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 7 is Case PC 10550 to rezone 8516 North Claussen from R1 District to the I-1 District.
William Garrett with Garrett &amp; Company, 9701 North Broadway Extension.
Tell us what you're asking for, please.
Moving to rezone some property in Boulevard Heights from R1 to I-1 zoning.
We show on our staff report map of the area, streets, northwest 84th and 83rd. Those are not actually existing, though, are they?
No, the streets are not in any of 83rd, 84th, or 85th. Their city has a drainage ditch on the east side of this property. It's about a 30-foot drop-off into a drainage ditch, and I don't believe those roads will ever be opened.
There's not really any place for them to go, is there? I mean, this, this is a fairly large area of vacant land, is it not, to the east?
Approximately, 25 acres vacant.
This development is, is consistent with the other development in the area? If I could make a motion, I would make a motion to prove... Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this item here today? No? I didn't receive any calls or complaints from anyone, any opposition. I have a motion, a second, to approve Item Number 7. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you all.
Item 8 is SPUD 1090 to rezone 1025 North Tulsa Avenue from C4 and I-1 to the SPUD 1090 district.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. This is an application to add a SPUD that's got I-2 zoning uses in it. The current property owner of this is Conley Paving. They own the production plant that is in SPUD 479, and they own their corporate office, which is an I-2 zoning. So, we're combining the C4, the heavy commercial, and the I-1 along the frontage of Tulsa, and adding it in a SPUD to add some I-2 uses. As you can see by the zoning surrounding that, there's a mixture of uses, including some R4 that are, a few of them are developed into single-family houses, but mostly south of Ninth Street, this area. There's some mobile home parks over there. There's some mobile home parks south of us, Tulsa dead ends. So, this will just be a continuation of the business model that the Conleys have done. If you've ever been by their shop, it is like, need is a pen for paving contractor that's saying something. So, as you can see on the site plan, they intend to do a couple of warehouse buildings. We do agree to put any outdoor storage and everything that, relative to any of the I-2 uses that allow for that behind the buildings, and we have agreed previously in the PUD that we would be 100 feet, not have any outdoor storage 100 feet from our south line, but we've, we're going, I'm going to amend that with a couple of other amendments. So, we'll, from Ninth Street South, we'll not allow any outdoor storage, and there's a couple of uses, and a pursuant conversation with the chairman. She asked if we'd consider removing a couple of the heavier uses in I-2, and we've agreed to do that. Auto auction will be removed. We're going to restrict recycling to indoor and behind the buildings. We're restricting I-2 moderate industrial uses to prohibit sawmills, steel mills, lumber milling, and glass manufacturing. We're going to prohibit outdoor speakers, and then, as I mentioned, outdoor uses will be restricted to north of Northwest 19, Ninth Street. We do agree with the staff's 2 TEs. We'd appreciate your approval.
Those changes you just outlined, those are memorialized in a revised version of your MDS. Is that right?
I'm going to provide them to the staff.
Okay.
I just wanted to read them into the record. We'll amend the MDS.
And I do appreciate your consideration on those items. This is an area that's in transition, and, you know, I, since there is existing residential in the area, I wanted to minimize whatever impact there might be, and I think that, that those accommodations will do that, so... Is there anyone else who wants to be heard on this item today?
I move approval of this application, subject to those technical evaluations.
Second.
And the amendments.
And the amendments that Tim just read into the record, yeah. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number eight, subject to the TEs and the five amendments that were read into the record, which I have notation up here for our record-keeping. Would you cast your votes, please?
Thank you so much.
It's approved.
Item nine is case SPUD 1087 to rezone 7010 North Klassen Boulevard from PUD 1173 to PUD 1087.
Mark Grubbs, 1819 South Morgan Road, on behalf of the applicant. What you have before you today is a SPUD on a one-and-a-half acre parcel. It is a mixed-use SPUD, commercial, residential, office. I have had some correspondence with Chairman Powers. She had asked that we remove U-Unit 8300.57 payday or title loan agencies. We've agreed to that. She's asked that we also agree to only one free standing sign in eight feet of height. We have agreed to that. We have also agreed to limit it to four access points and no access off of Klassen, and sidewalks will be constructed in accordance with city requirements. There is one thing that was noticed after staff review, that we listed two-story but 50 feet of height. We actually requesting that that be three-story. It wouldn't change the height, but it would go from two to three, so... And I have some preliminary elevations of that, if anybody would like to see any of the elevations for the building. But we agree to staff's one comment of the 25-foot site triangle. Would ask for your approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Has the developer considered... I know the development across the street. The developer considered mirroring that? So, you've already got a significant amount of parking behind the building? Maybe it would be more efficient if it all connected and the buildings were moved towards the front of the site?
It would have to be moved substantially forward, I would think. We have not discussed that. I think that looking for more retail on the bottom, retail and office on the bottom, and then residential on the top two floors. So, to meet that parking requirement, I'd have to push the building substantially forward into a 20... Beyond a 25-foot building line, so... But we have not discussed that, I'm sorry.
Thought I might mention it.
Commissioners, do we have any other questions? I appreciate the items you were able to accommodate. I think some of them were just clarifications, but I think that they improve your application.
Thank you. Mark, the staff makes a comment. I didn't hear you comment on it about the additional 25-foot side triangle right-of-way request. Do you have any objection to that? Are you opposed to that?
I do not. I thought I said that we agreed to that.
Did you? Okay. All right.
I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number nine, subject to the technical evaluations and the amendments that were read into the record. Would you cast your votes, please? Mr. Hinkall, are you voting with us? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 10 is case SPUD 1084 to rezone 9701 Boardwalk Boulevard from R4 and C3 to the SPUD 1084 district.
And Chairman, Members. Commission Brian Coon, representing Express Personnel. This property is immediately south of one of the Express Personnel buildings. We are wanting to add additional parking on the north side of this track that's on your screen, and we agree with the TEs. I would just like to amend number two. We agree with doing sidewalks, but we'd like to do those at the time we do the development along Britton Road. But other than that, we agree with all your TEs.
You're okay with the three, adding those back, the uses multifamily and retail?
Sure.
Didn't figure you'd object to that. All right. Anybody signed up?
And number four, the alignment with Rambling Road to the south, we discussed that?
And we're fine with that. If we put in a new driveway on there, then we'll line up with Rambling Road. That's fine. Or new road, I guess, so, yeah.
Is there anyone else who wants to be heard on this item? Commissioners?
I'll move approval of the item. You want your sidewalk language stated, Brian, or you just want it...
If I was, we'd be in... Sidewalks would be constructed at the time of development. Yes. At the time of development of anything along the south side of this property, yes.
Can I ask, Steph, is that something different than we would normally require? Would it be any development on the side would trigger the sidewalks normally? So, do we need to add this language? I guess is what I'm really asking.
We might add language that says any development other than parking. That's fine. Network.
It's fine.
Okay.
Second the motion.
It's my motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 10, subject to the TEs and the modifications read into the record or discussed. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 11 is case PUD 1679 to rezone 14500 South Sooner Road from the PUD 1422 district to PUD 1697.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Steve Off, spelled E-O-F-F, 2533 Osborne Drive, Norman, Oklahoma, 73069.
Will you tell us what you're asking us for today?
To rezone PUD 1422 to PUD 1697. I'm here for the applicant.
Commissioners will be well aware that I have trouble with these kind of applications. You have existing zoning that allows for all of the uses that you've listed currently, except for, and you're really only adding two uses. Am I right about that?
I'm aware of one, which is self-storage.
Say again?
I'm aware of one use that we added, which is self-storage.
The self-storage. Is that the only one you're adding?
I thought it was.
Okay. Commissioners, the only thing about this application that jumps out at me is the language about EMD signage, which I absolutely cannot support at this location, but... So, that's a deal-breaker for me, but... Maybe I should ask, is there... Oh, there are. I'm sorry, there are the people who wish to be heard. Do we want to hear from them first?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to hear from them.
Okay. Christine McGlashan? Is it McGlassu? If you give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Christine McGlashan, 5808 Southeast 142nd, and I live in the neighborhood just to the east of the proposed development. I have probably worked for about the last month with Mr. Off. I'm going to say his name wrong. In a bizarre twist of fate, I had some experience with this process for a work issue. We've been communicating back and forth with our homeowners association. I believe there might be another resident here in opposition to this proposed project. I have worked with them and given information to the HOA, sent in some elevation drawings, which were to the majority of our residents liking.
Oh, no.
We submitted a list of requests that we had, such as lighting, non-24-hour access, landscaping between our property line and their property line. All of those were agreed upon in writing for us, and so I think that it will be in addition. I do know that the residents in our neighborhood don't want anything in that lot, but with the development of the bank that went in a couple of years ago and the gas station, it's highly unlikely that that's going to be left just empty country spots. So, I don't see any objection to it. The elevations are beautiful. There's a similar property that's a couple of miles away that I've driven by, very tastefully done, and I don't see that it would be a problem.
So, what are these things that have been agreed to? I'm not sure they're reflected in our staff report or in the zoning application that's in front of us today.
We've requested... Well, we clarified that there won't be 24-hour access, so that was an important thing for most of our residents, to not have high-traffic volume at all hours of the day and night, noise, et cetera. They'll have normal daytime sometime into the evening hours. It will be gated, only access controlled for residents who have purchased units. The lighting will not shine directly into any of the backyards of the property that butts up to this new proposal. All of the lights will shine down onto their property, so there shouldn't be any light, noise, or issue into the residence. We asked for a description of what it would generally look like. We also asked for a landscaping barrier. Our residents do have six-foot stockade fence on that divider, but we also asked for landscaping barrier to just kind of protect the view a little bit more. That was agreed upon as well.
And did you settle on a width for the barrier?
I don't believe we did.
It's 10 foot in the application, correct?
I do believe it was already... And I do believe that most of these requests that we had were already in the application.
Okay. Do you have elevations that you'd like to attach to the application? Because I don't have any in my packet.
Curtis sent an email the other day. Did you see that?
Oh, yeah.
I think I would feel better if they were attached to the application, since they've been agreed to.
I just wondered, did you see the one that Curtis sent?
I did not. I'm sorry, no.
They will be made an exhibit of the application.
Okay.
I would also like to clarify, though, because I'm not sure about the signage that you referenced, and I'd like to know more information about that.
The EMD signage?
Yes.
Let's get our applicant to tell us. What signage is it that you envision for the site?
That hasn't been planned yet. It is in the PUD. The sign will be, I believe, it's eight foot tall and square feet on the side. The sign will be visible from the residential side, because I... I believe it will just be a... It's just kind of a box sign.
If you... I'm sorry, if you could speak here so that we can pick you up on that.
Kind of a check base, monument sign.
Are you able to commit to knowing EMD signage?
I don't know what that is. We were just talking about that. It's like an LED sign?
Yes.
Okay. I'd probably need to talk to the owner, but we would, of course, meet whatever the sign regulations are for that area.
Well, since you're rezoning the property into a PUD, normally, well... Maybe we should get staff to tell us. What EMD signage normally be allowed at this location under rural commercial as a base?
It's commercial district, so it would allow a full level of EMD. His application restricts it to level one, which is an eight-second hold on a static message.
Does that make sense to you, that explanation?
Yes.
Again, I can't support EMD signage at this location, but commissioners? I don't have anybody else signed up to speak. Do we have questions or comments or...
You're in agreement with all the technical evaluations, you said? Okay. Which included the staff comment about the brick-and-masonry extending on all the structures, not just the frontage, the sooner stuff. Okay.
Was there anybody else to sign up?
There's not. This is... Although, I'm sorry, Ms. McGlashan did reference that she thought someone else was here.
I did receive one email from a fellow homeowner whose home is adjacent to the property in question, and he did not want anything to be built there ever.
Okay. Is there somebody else here who wants to be heard on this matter today? Let's hear from you.
I am Don Peters. I live at 1449 Almond Valley Drive. I'm going to... My house is going to be right behind this fortress of storage units that I don't like to have there. I sent you an opposition letter detailing four or five reasons, and I just don't... This is a residential area. Storage units are more industrialized to me, and I think that's where they belong. I might be the only one in my neighborhood to oppose it. The lady that just stood up, she lives on that street over there, so she'll never see the storage unit, but I'll walk out on my back patio and I'll see all these roofs. Okay? And I don't like that.
Have you seen the PUD that's currently approved?
Well, I saw this little picture that was up here that's on Sooner Road, but I haven't seen anything that's along my fence line.
Okay.
So, that's kind of weird that you'd come up here and show things, but not show what it's going to impact on my fence line.
Okay.
Not you, sir. I'm sorry, not you, but...
Okay.
You know, I see all these pretty pictures, but I don't see anything showing me what's going to be up against my fence line. I hear a 10-foot easement, some kind of barrier, but if I'm sitting on my back patio having dinner and I look out there and I see storage units, that's not very pleasant to look at. Right now, I got a nice, big country field to look at.
I understand. It's been zoned, I believe, or... Living Pepper...
Pepperwell.
Pepperwell. It's been zoned since 2010 for commercial.
Right.
That whole strip right there.
And I wouldn't have a problem if there was a bank back there or something, but storage units just don't... To me... We do have a bank down, which I use, and it's very nice, but, you know, I know there's a lot of land there, but what about low-impact businesses, you know, stuff like that, daycare centers? But I just wanted to voice my opinion that I do oppose it. I'm sorry that none of my other neighbors wanted to step up, but... So... Sorry.
The buildings are about eight-and-a-half feet tall on Don's fence line. His fence will be six feet, and it is six feet currently. From the fence headed our direction will be a 10-foot landscape easement. City code requires a nice tree every 25 feet. I've talked to the eventual owner, and he's willing to put those a little closer together as long as it doesn't end up, you know, close enough where they impede on the way they grow. But from that 10-foot, then there'll be another 20-foot drive before the building starts. So, it'll be a total of 30 feet back offset between the fence and the back of the building. And then, like I said, the building itself will be eight-and-a-half feet tall, and Don's fence will be six feet. So, there'll be a minimal amount of what's actually seen there.
Now, to me, a minimal is too much. I don't want to see a roof. And trees are great as long as they're mature.
Sir? Sir, would you step to the microphone so we can...
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
He told me there's a 2-foot difference, but to me, that's still too much. I don't want to see any roof of a storage unit. And trees are great if they're mature and they block out the view. That's my point.
I guess what I would say in response, I totally understand your concerns, but the property is currently zoned for commercial development, and there are a number of uses that are encompassed by that. All of them would require roofs, but some of them would be, I think, more impactful than this use might be on your property. Or have you seen the underlying zoning on the property? Would you like to look at it? I have mine right here. I mean, currently, it would allow convenient sales and personal services, eating establishments, office uses for medical services and administrative and professional offices, animal sales and services. These are uses that are currently allowed on the property, so, you know, I understand...
I don't have a problem with those. Those are low-impact to me. A veterinarian clinic?
These are uses that are currently allowed on the property. So, you know, I'm, I understand.
I don't have a problem with those. Those are low-impact to me. A veterinarian clinic, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
If I could, based on my own personal experience with self-storage units abutting our neighborhood, literally right against our park, there is few uses you will see for property that are less obtrusive than self-storage. That's been there for 10 years. Nobody in our neighborhood has ever complained. Traffic is minimal. It, it, now, it's not a house, I get that, but, I, I mean, you know, I thought that we would absolutely hate it as a use, as a neighborhood as a whole, and I was, I've been stunned, literally, at it's, nobody's there. I mean, seriously, nobody is there. Day, night, doesn't, it doesn't matter. So, I, I get your point. I'm not necessarily arguing with you. I'm just saying, so far as a retail use or some other use that may be a target for this particular property, I would suggest that those uses might be far more obtrusive, especially to those that are closest to them along your boundary of, I guess, on Almond Valley Drive. So, I, that, it's just my, it's anecdotal evidence, personal experience.
I, I guess I would want to see whatever agreement that you've made with the neighbors about hours of operation incorporated into the zoning documents, so, whatever that is and whatever they've agreed to.
I guess so you don't feel like you're on an island out here, sir? I would say that generally, I agree, and I think, I, I'm, I'm not a big fan of self-storage, especially near neighborhoods. Problem for me is, I think the character of development in this area is kind of gonna be the same no matter what it is. Uh, it's gonna be auto-oriented, you're gonna see a lot of cars, a lot of parking, um, it's, it's all gonna kind of be the same, so it's, it's hard for me to single this one out. If this was, if this was in, you know, a downtown neighborhood, obviously, I'd be like, we can't have that there. But the, it's, it's just a different character. So, to me, it's hard for me to vote against it. Um, I've beat up other self-storage units, but this one, I, that's.
I don't see the difference between your concern for downtown and out in the country, so.
Again, it's careful.
Because it's not intrusive, there's hardly any traffic, I don't care, it's just, I gotta look out my back, on my patio and look out, see storage unit roofs. Okay?
I, I hear you.
I didn't, I didn't buy a house until I could see that. And I'm talking, you know, that's a long, that's a lot of land.
Sooner Road is a, is a state highway.
Huh?
Sooner Road is a state highway.
Well, I know. I mean, every Saturday, I see guys going down to OU, but it doesn't bother me that way. I'm not talking about the noise of the traffic on the road.
I just think the difference between that and a gas station is pretty much.
Well, there is a gas station on the other side that's far down where, from where I live, so I don't, it doesn't bother me, but there's no one living near there. Okay? But this is 100 homes. Our HOA did not take a vote on this discussion. One person from one house that doesn't even live on Almond Valley just voted, okay? And our HOA wouldn't get involved anyways because they don't care about those people that live on that street. Most of them live that way.
Okay. I, you know, before you come forward and involve us in a debate about HOAs and who they represent, I think the decision that we're making here today has to do with the appropriateness of this use for this piece of land. It's not based on the approval of the homeowners association.
Right.
Nor is it based on your disapproval of the development of the property. The property is zoned for commercial use. The question is whether this particular use should be added to the list of others.
Well, you sent me a letter, I wrote you an opposition letter. I'm just doing what I need to do.
And, and I appreciate that, I really do. And I, and, you know, I can't say that I disagree with your concerns. I'm not sure I would want to look over my back fence and see a storage unit either.
Yeah. If the guy lives in Norman, he should be building in Norman. That's the way I look.
Well, that's not quite the way development works, but I, we appreciate your comment.
All right, I'm done.
Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this item? Commissioners?
I will make a motion to recommend approval to City Council.
Second.
And, yeah, including the TE with the hours of operation.
Did we get those defined?
Have we?
Nine to nine during the summer, nine to 10, uh, I mean, sorry, nine to 10 in the summer, nine to nine in the winter. Nine AM. Uh, actually, that's our, that's our office hours.
Okay.
Uh, the gate hours would be till nine in the summertime, in the wintertime, till 10 in the summertime, and they're usually start about 7:00 AM, the gate hours.
Okay, so, I think that's what we're talking about.
Seven AM to nine, to 10 in summer.
Gate hours are seven?
Seven AM, nine PM in the winter, seven PM.
Seven to 10.
Seven to 10. Let's just make it easy.
Seven to 10, yes.
And I don't think, uh, I don't think Doug, the owner, I don't think he would have a problem if that was till nine o'clock. I mean, there's just not much, hardly anybody's, if they don't have 24-hour access, they're usually not there till 21:00, so.
Okay.
Nine to nine it is.
Motion to approve, uh, application. Recommend to City Council with the amendment, uh, seven to 10, operating hours.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 11 with the addition of hours of operation, 9:00 AM, 9:00 PM.
You said seven.
I'm sorry, 7:00 AM, 9:00 PM. Um, was that really all there was? There wasn't anything else? For some reason, I thought there was. Okay. Um, cast your votes, please. Item is approved.
Item 12 is S.P.U.D. 1083 to rezone 640 Northwest 150th from R1 to S.P.U.D. 1083.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is an S.P.U.D. that would convert what is an existing single-family residence to an office. It is identical, you'll note on the map before you, Spud 921. That is an application that I did just less than two years ago, that just like this, converted an existing single-family home to an office. Uh, it's a bit of a unique situation in that we have two, two single-family homes that are on large lots that directly take access from arterial. Um, I would submit that this commission and council, if this came through today, would never allow that to happen, based upon the nature of the use, the type of use you'd expect to see along an arterial, certainly something like this that's mid-block would be an office type of use. So what we did in the application is mirror what we were able to get approved in the, the Spud to our west. Uh, you, you will note that there are a handful of TEs. Um, I do agree with nine of the 10 of those. The document has been amended accordingly and resubmitted to staff. Um, I'm not sure why we had so many TEs. Like I said, I literally filed the exact same Spud document that was approved and recommended by this commission. Um, so perhaps there's just been a tweak in the wording. Like I said, we're fine with nine of them. Uh, TE number 10, we do not agree to. That is a sidewalk. I understand the commission's general policy regarding sidewalks. The exhibit before you is meant to address that. If you look to our east, it's fully developed and there is no sidewalk. If you look to the west, it's developed and there is no sidewalk. Specifically, Spud 921, that again was recommended for approval by this commission and ultimately approved by City Council, did not require that applicant to, to build a sidewalk. So, uh, with that and the development to the east, it's clearly a sidewalk that would go nowhere and never connect to a, a future sidewalk, so we would ask to be given the same treatment that this commission gave less than two years ago to my client to the west. Be happy to answer any additional questions.
Well, isn't that, is that a sidewalk in front of your people's house to the west? Am I seeing a sidewalk?
No.
Is that, that's not what that is?
No.
Or is it done?
Well, I know if you go, if you keep going on Western.
Is it a fence?
It's a fence. The reason that the sidewalk was not required on 921 is there's this void between the development at the corner of Western and 150th and that Spud 921, and so there would never be a connection of the sidewalk. And so Spud 921 specifically excludes, uh, the requirement to build a sidewalk.
What is that void?
I'm sorry?
What is that void?
Uh, it's a, I don't know, it's a part of the pond and drainage area. It's a, a tree-covered.
Is it a city out?
I am not sure. My guess is it's common area.
I'm just not sure why we wouldn't necessarily expect sidewalks potentially in the future for that property. I, I would guess, given that, that element, and I'm, I'm just guessing, but I would guess that it's probably the HOA's property common area, whatever plat that was filed was a part of, it's probably incorporated into that document.
Or it's some type of wetland or something designated for it.
Was that, I don't remember 921, but if I was here for it, I feel like I made a mistake. I definitely think that, uh, um, you know, it's generally the policy, as you said, to, to ask for sidewalks. And if we don't do it at this point, when we have a chance, then it's just never gonna get done.
Fair enough. Um, I think the reason that it was, it came before the planning commission some point in October, it looks like October 7th, 2016. I'm not sure if you were.
That was before me.
Okay. Um, so your, your predecessor, perhaps. Um, but here, there was, you know, the specific circumstances, at least in the eyes of the commission, warranted it. I think it wasn't just the condition to the west, but also to the east. You have a fully-developed neighborhood, um, that does not have a sidewalk, and so the odds that there's going to be a, a connection, given both of those conditions.
But we require sidewalks on new projects all the time in areas that are developed?
I think the city would have a hard time defending a requirement here that less than two years ago, given the same exact fact pattern, deemed it appropriate to not require a sidewalk. I have a hard time seeing the justification.
I, I hear you. I think you just gotta, you, at some point, you gotta take a stand and say, it's now time to start doing sidewalks. That's the way I feel. I would like to see, I would like to see you guys rethink that.
Well, the, the time to take a stand certainly was more than two years ago. You're right? I mean, the, the policy required, well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, the policy demanding sidewalks was in place at the time that the city deemed it proper to not require sidewalks immediately to our west.
The city's requirement now is for subdivisions to have frontage on arterial streets to install sidewalks. So this subdivision may have gone in before that requirement if, is, yeah, 150th Street doesn't have sidewalks. So the time, at the time of development, if an ordinance requires sidewalks to be installed, they should be installed then. Since this wasn't required of that subdivision, I don't know at any time that that subdivision would be redeveloped, because typically you don't redevelop residential subdivisions with new development that would be required to put the sidewalk in. So that's the dilemma with the area to the east.
Well, Aubrey, I think, is coming to your defense, so I'm, I will back off then on my, on my sidewalk requirement. That's all it took? That's all it took to break your conviction, was Aubrey just had to?
Um, I think, I think.
It's existing conditions.
We have, we have an extremely serious, um, policy with respect to sidewalks, and I'm really trying hard to remember what it was about the, the, uh, application to the west that, that caused us to deviate from it. It seemed to me, it seems to me that it had more to do with the fact that the properties to the east were fully developed. Um, and is there, is there actually a wall along those? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, I believe they have a brick wall.
So.
Decorative brick wall in the, the front of 150th Street.
The idea was, first of all, are there sidewalks on the north side of the street?
On the north side of 150th, there are sidewalks.
So there, there are existing sidewalks that are capable of being used. They're not on this side of the street, but, but that, I think, was a factor. The unlikelihood that there would ever be sidewalks established to the east, I think, it sort of comes back to me. And I actually think that this property to the west, not the one that you, um, rezoned previously, which just FYI, never a good thing to, you know, rub our noses in mistakes we've made before.
Well, I don't think it was a mistake.
Well.
I think you got it right.
I think you might be in the minority there. And, but I think it may also have had to do with the actual, and I won't say impossibility because it's only money, of, of extending the sidewalk from where it ends there, um, to the, to the east. It seems to me like this, this area north of the pond, if I'm remembering correctly, is kind of, um, also, yeah, there's a deep kind of, uh, drop there, and it just, I, I think there was more to it than just, you know, Mr. Box's good looks. It was the reason why we decided not to extend the sidewalk to the west there.
I think it was also, this is literally the same exhibit, except I moved the little thumbtack from one house over. Now, granted, it took me a while to figure out how to move that little thumbtack, but I moved it over to the house to the east. But it's, it is the same exhibit.
I, I'm, what I'm trying to work through is our, our, our own, um, you know, decision-making process. I think, I think that we were actually convinced that there was a, a solid basis for not requiring it previously that would also apply to this property, I guess is what I'm trying to say a long way around.
Well, I, I hope so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna waffle on what I was saying because of Aubrey's comments and, uh...
And my good looks?
And your good looks. Um, I generally. Don't put that in the record. The one thing, the one thing I do want to say is, like, as somebody that walks all over the place, like, I don't generally think that it's, it's enough to have sidewalks on the north side.
I agree.
Because on a four-lane highway to cross that, if you actually are somebody that has to use it, to try to cross that safely, and there's no crosswalk within a mile, I would guess that, you know.
Yeah. I would, I would not offer that as a justification for substitution. And, and I also would not for one minute discourage you from your very vocal support of our sidewalk policy. We, we take it very seriously around here. So, um, is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item? Commissioners, do we have any other comments, questions, or concerns? If not, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to recommend approval to City Council for S.P.U.D. 1083, striking TE number 10.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 12, striking TE number 10. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you.
Item 13 is S.P.U.D. 1080 to rezone 301 Northwest 96th Street from the R1 District to S.P.U.D. 1080.
Mr. Ledbetter, would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Dave Ledbetter, 2612 Drake Stone, here on behalf of the applicant, Rod Myers.
And tell us what you're asking.
Mr. Myers wishes to rezone the property recently purchased from existing R1 to utilize a personal storage building for his personal use only.
Um, I, I had asked this item to be continued so that I would have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Pennington. My concerns were about the, um, um, view of, of North Harvey Avenue as a real street, which it definitely is not. We're clearly not in a position to set the S.P.U.D. up so that it is, it is, you know, only allowed to be his personal use. But what we've agreed to instead was to, um, put a crash gate on Harvey so that it's very clear that that is not in any way, shape, or form considered part of the access to the property for the point, uh, for the purposes of this approval. It's really just a kind of a gravel goat track. I mean, it's not a street, and it has really, um, deep, um, ditches on either side of it, and it's kind of a mess, so, um, I don't think it's appropriate to look to it as a, as a point of access for purposes of our approval today. Um, is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this item? Commissioners?
I'm with approval, item 13, uh, with the addition of the crash gate or emergency access gate, uh, onto North Harvey Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 13 with that one amendment to the application, uh, limiting the access along Harvey to emergency vehicles. Cast your votes, please.
Item 14 is case P.U.D. 1693 to rezone 13640 North Council Road from R1 to P.U.D. 1693.
Ross Morris, Forest Engineering, representing the applicant, who is with me here, Mr. Jesse Sandhu of Star Properties. They own a corner at Memorial and Council, North Council, which is about a 500 by 500 tract. So it's about five and a half plus acres. They want to make a commercial corner out of it. We've gone through the process. We've put a P.U.D. together for it. And the TEs, the, I think we can agree with all the TEs, except T.E. number 5, which would like to limit us to one access on Council and one on Memorial, which we had actually, in the P.U.D., asked for two. We've got enough distance, et cetera, to put that in. So we would like to have an exception to T.E. 5 and request two accesses on Council and two on Memorial. And I think Mr. Cravens has some comments.
We, I spoke to the applicant just about this generally called to express some concerns. A couple of them were dealing with some of the use units that concern me, automotive parking garages, the use of, that would be 8300.12, and then also gasoline sales large, 8300.45, because it allows for the storage of damaged vehicles. So I simply asked it to be restricted to 8300.46, which is gasoline sales small. The removal of lodging accommodations, both bed and breakfast and commercial lodging. There's a residential tract, I'm very familiar with this area. There's a residential tract due east of this that's a single family. Then you have an O1 office development. It's all residential. We recently approved an R2 development to the south of that that's going to join this as well. So some of these larger-scale kind of commercial or automotive uses are really my concern. It's also a concern because of the traffic in this area, which was the issue I expressed to the applicant as well on the number of curb cuts. It's a little different than what we saw with the application recently, where, I mean, for all intents and purposes, we were a little bit held hostage on those curb cuts that existed on Memorial. Here, we're not. I asked them to reduce those curb cuts to two, which they can't live with, and that prevents me from being able to support the application by itself. Lot of traffic here. As it stands today, all Paycom traffic goes through this area. That will change, admittedly. Here, there's projects on the books, an extension to Rockwell, and then the development that I just referenced at Rockwell Memorial, too, that'll connect some of those roads together. But having said that, I'm still really concerned. It's a heavy traffic area at certain parts of the day, and this is going to exacerbate that problem for sure. The lodging accommodations, I always look at what I think is a great example of really bad zoning work, no offense to whoever did it, but at MacArthur and Memorial, there's some hotels there that back up to Turtle Creek. And there's hotels that, because the tracks weren't organized in a way that separated that use from the back fence line, I expressed concern that they should divide this tract and preclude that from abutting the residential, so they'd have to drag it to the corner, which, of course, they don't want to do, because that's where they want to put the gas station. So lodging accommodations, for me, is a real challenge, because I don't think that people peering into the backyards is a great, a great end result. I think that would be a good mitigation circumstance. So those were issues for me. And then the only other one, which I didn't fully understand, I was going to ask JJ about this, to just kind of confirm what community recreation would allow. It seems to me like that was a little bit of a kitchen sink inclusion. But I don't, I don't know exactly what that would permit here. Can you comment on that? Can you enlighten me a little bit there?
Parks, playgrounds, that sort of thing.
So the idea would just be that it would allow them to have a playground at the gas station?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we could all agree that playgrounds at gas stations are important. So we can leave that one. I stand corrected. And then the other thing that I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about here, which I know is an issue I did discuss with the applicant, was the idea that even though it's conditional, outdoor storage and sales, as well as non-accessory signs, i.e. the desire to place a billboard on the location. I know it's Memorial, and it's, it's a little bit hard. I'm kind of on the fence here, but it's, there's a lot of them now. So, I don't know. If, other comments? It's a concern for me. I just wanted to voice those, that I discussed those with the applicant. So with that, I'll let the other commissioners address any concerns they have.
So, just so I'm clear on the access, is it Council or Memorial? Because it's right turn only on Memorial. I can't see that two on Memorial is a, would be a problem. I just, I'm just wondering what, I'm not as familiar as you are with that.
My only, my only issue, you're absolutely right. Council is a right turn on Memorial, except that on the west side of that, on the west side of the Council interchange, Memorial goes to two-way. So it turns into a two-way street on that side.
Mm-hmm.
And so you've got traffic going both directions. And it's really, that, what concerns me is the loop around traffic. So twice a day, well, yeah, twice a day, those intersections are regulated by off-duty Oklahoma City Police Department personnel directing traffic around there. So you have a constant stream of traffic going through. I just don't see that two curb cuts in that small of an area on a Memorial is necessary. I don't. And I, and I'm a, hey, I'm a curb cut guy. But I'm, I'm just saying, that's, that's extreme even for me, I'm going to tell you. Council is not nearly as big of an issue to me, because that, that would really be, and you're off the, so, but the Memorial side of it is a, it's a constant thoroughfare right there.
Okay. And then I am interested in your comment there about the lodging, Ross, and the residential back to the east. And again, you're going to have the, that is a R2 that's coming in at 1677 that we did just approve about a month ago. So you have the potential for lodging there at 67, whatever stories tall overlooking down into the residential there. I think that is a bit of a concern. That, if that were moved back to the Memorial side, that, you know, you don't have any, there's no particular tracks drawn into the land. It's just...
Yeah, we're trying, I mean, he's trying to put this in position for marketing, you know, for a commercial development. But we don't have any definite, other than itself, they have, they're in the convenience and gas business. So they're looking at the corner for themselves and some potential around it. They just don't have that put together yet. But that thought I had was, okay, so maybe, maybe it would work up against the Memorial side, you know, with the lodging.
Well, I think it would because of the fact that you're not, for one thing, you're, you're not going to get anything built to the north.
Right.
Because that's dead between there and the turnpike. So...
So if we said, well, we'd be X number of feet north of the south boundary with a facility building.
So this is not, I mean, I guess you're just sort of positioning this to be ready to do something with it. You don't know exactly what you're going to do.
That's right.
Yeah. And, and I think that's a challenge. And that's, that's the difference, is they bring in, they bring them in in tracks like we've seen before, and now you can kind of organize it. So we have a look at those mitigation. And that's my concern, is it's a, it's a blanket. That's why I suggested the tracks to them.
Yeah, I agree. And I, I understand the concern back to the back of Turtle Creek, where they built two or three hotels back behind, behind Rib Palace and the Pizza Kitchen and...
And the desirability is arguable. It abuts the turnpike. It's a perfect area for lodging. It's just the adjacent use. In that context is, I mean, to look at Turtle Creek and do it again is, I can't do it.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, so is there compromise between, say, we give up the lodging and maybe we can get the entrances we want? I mean...
These are independent concerns that I have. One is about traffic flow, and one is about the compatibility of the uses that exist.
Either both be happy or both be unhappy, but at least we've got something done.
Well, yeah, I'm not going to be happy with two entrances on both Council and Memorial, or on either of them. And apparently need a little staff, based on the comments and the staff report. And I, that just, it's unnecessary. It's not what we do, and I don't see any reason to bury that here. The non-accessory signage is just an absolute deal breaker for me. There's absolutely no way I would support that. And...
Now, is that the accessory or the non-accessory?
Non-accessory.
Non-accessory.
And, and frankly, I think that the concern, I mean, the concerns that Commissioner Cravens is expressing are all the same concerns that I had as I was reviewing the staff report. So I, I don't think it's a question of compromise. I think those things need to be changed.
My name is Jesse Sandhu. Mr. Cravens, the reason I'm, we're asking two entrances because it's such a large parcel lands, almost six acres, but having just one entrance, it's going to be hard for even traffic to get out, in and out of there with one entrance.
I totally understand. And I think if you were coming here today and you had a, a real idea of what this development were going to look like, and so we could break these tracks up and kind of see how they would work, I think we probably could get a lot further in working toward a compromise. And I, and I apologize to you guys both that I didn't have a chance before this morning to reach out and talk. So I don't know if we need to visit more about it and, and continue it. But for, for me, it's going to be hard to get there unless we've break, broken this up into tracks where everybody can see the way this is going to lay out and what use is going where, to understand why another entrance might be necessary. I, just talk.
Yeah, I see that. But it is such a large parcel. That's why it was just like, if you have one entrance on each side, it's going to just get so crowded for, for even any retail we have there.
I think our, what is going there informs us with respect of the necessity and the need for the traffic. And, and it's hard for me to look at five acres and say, yeah, well, as you look at it on a blank screen, one entrance might work. But if you're going to put a large gas station, hotel lodging on the, on the east side there, and then some other retail, et cetera, down the block, one, one may not work. So, look, I think, I, we know this is going to develop in some sort of commercial sense, and that's what we encourage. Okay? We're not arguing with what, necessarily what you want to do. But I think you guys need to maybe take some opportunity and take a couple of weeks and rethink this. Give it a couple of, a look, a better look. Maybe, you're going to go to maybe November meeting or December and come back with a little more thought, because I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Cravens and Commissioner Powers that this needs a little, little more misogyn.
If we can come back in November, and Mr. Cravens, we can visit and go over some, if you want to continue, I guess.
The first meeting in November, we have, we have two? November 8th? Okay. Would it be the November 8th meeting? Is that agreeable to you?
It's pretty, that's a pretty quick turnaround to make, to make substantial changes.
We prefer December, so we have time to get it all back to you.
In December.
What meeting would that be? What's the date on that? I'm sorry.
13.
And I've got, I've got your contact information, so I'll reach out and make sure you know how to get in contact with me. Okay?
Thank you.
Real quick, sorry, because, because I don't want to, I don't want you guys to come back and be surprised by a comment from me. I missed the very first of this, but on the curb cuts, too, I mean, these are 60 feet wide drives?
Well, in the P.U.D., it said that we needed, we needed to go back and put a central median at 2020 on the, on the width.
I was going to say, because you could, you could turn four lanes into these right now, so...
Right.
You've basically almost got eight curb cuts there. But, yeah, I would just, show me what that's going to look like, because this is really wide.
All right.
And just since working here, I want to be clear, too, I did express some concern over the facade regulations. We talked about that as well. So, okay. So if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to continue. Item number 14, P.U.D. 1696 to the December 13th, 2018 meeting.
Second.
So a motion, a second to continue item, did we ever ask if there was anybody else here who wanted to be heard on this item today? If not, speak now or if you ever hold your peace. I have a motion, a second to continue item number 14 until the December 13th meeting of Planning Commission. Do you cast your votes, please? Mr. Highsmith, it is so continued.
Thank you.
Item 15 is case S.P.U.D. 1088 to rezone 1553 Southwest 44th Street from the R1 Single Family District to S.P.U.D. 1088.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Excuse me?
Would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Luis Rodriguez, 413 West Britton Road, apartment 435. I come on behalf of Nancy Chavez.
Tell me your last name again, I'm sorry.
Rodriguez. R-O-D-R-I-E-U-E-C-S in Zul. And with her. So, we are requesting the change of, of use from a single-family residential to a S.P.U.D. 1088 for, to use the facilities as a small retail operation. It will be for natural and natural products, lotions and oils, for body lotions or hand lotions, all natural.
So this is an area in Ward 6, and it's, there's a lot of momentum on this street. I think you can see both, you know, if you drove by and from the aerial, that it being four lanes there isn't very conducive any longer to single family. So it's changing quite rapidly towards office. I think, I think it is appropriate, and unless there's other comments, I'd be ready to make a motion at any time.
I just have one, one comment. There was a staff comment about, from traffic regarding the, I think it was the, I'm trying to find it, I'm sorry. There it is. The, providing the aisle providing access should be at least 22 feet in width. What is the aisle providing access here?
An aisle?
Yeah, basically, you're in, you're ingress, coming off 44th Street. How big is that drive?
I can barely...
How wide is the drive coming off of 44th?
The drive is about 20, 16 feet wide, the opening for vehicles, yes. It's an existing drive. At this time, we don't, we don't see any reason to change.
I kind of concur. I agree with that.
Okay. Okay. If there's no further comments, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the City Council on that.
Before you do that, let me ask if there's anybody else who wants to be heard on this item today? No? Now go.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve, item number 15. Do you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you for your time.
Item 16 is case PC 10552 to rezone 2910 South Blackwelder Avenue from R2 to I1 District.
Is our applicant present? Oh, sorry. Item number 16, is our applicant present? I guess not. I'll take a motion to continue this item. We'll contact the applicant, see if we can find out what's up.
So move.
Motion, a second to continue item number 16 to November the 8th. Do you cast your votes, please? Mr. Pennington? It is continued.
Item 17 was continued to November 8th. Item 18 is P.U.D. 1693 to rezone 9900 North Kelly Avenue from R1 and R4 to P.U.D. 1693.
And I think we'll take just a minute to kind of clear the deck here. Several, several members of the commission are having to recuse themselves from a vote on this item, Christopher Hensley, Commissioner Cravens, and myself. So I'll gather up my things, I think, since we, since this is actually going to be the last item to be heard today, we may not get some of our members back. Oh, yes. And Commissioner Coffey is going to chair the meeting for us.
Can I make a procedure? Can I make a procedural comment on this? Is that appropriate? Can I do that? It, so we got, we're gonna be down to five people again. I understand. I really think it's fair, regardless, for both sides of this application, that it be forwarded on to city council without a recommendation, as opposed to coming back again and potentially having the same thing. And we have one meeting in November, so if we have the same problem, that's not fair. Agreed. Okay.
So, we're gonna talk about that. I don't agree with that. I don't, first of all, let's see what happens. But I'm not in favor of us sending things on to council without a recommendation, one way or the other. And so, we'll see.
The reason I'm in agreement is today, like, we've, we've got our maximum amount of commissioners.
Not five.
Rusty. Forgot about Rusty.
That's true. All right, got me there.
No, I don't think you've introduced the item yet, so I'm waiting for you to do that.
All right, call it back to order, please. Would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Brian Coon, representing the applicant, Madam Chairman, Members' Commission. Obviously, you've, most of you have heard most of our story. I'm gonna save you a lot of time today. We are going to, I don't wanna say withdraw, 'cause everybody will go crazy if I say that. We're going to remove the compost request for track one and two, and ask your approval of the PUD with the, with the PEs that you have in place. But we just feel like, I don't wanna say read the writing on the wall, I've read the reading, I've read the writing on the protest letters, and I know the school has not decided to back off, and I know that most of your protesters out here are not in favor of the compost, have never been. And so, I'm gonna save everyone about two hours, and just say we will remove the composting use from this PUD.
Well, I guess the question would be, what's it gonna be to all the protesters? Does that satisfy them?
Was that a no?
I heard some no's.
Okay.
So, I think we'll have to hear.
It's a what? Okay. Do you want me, I know we have a new commissioner today, welcome. Do you wanna hear a presentation on what we have at this point, or?
I, I think I'd just like to hear specifically about the concerns that have been brought up in all of the letters.
Okay.
So, traffic is an issue, the facade of the, I guess, all the, what's it gonna look like compared to all of the other businesses that are in the area?
Okay.
So, those other issues besides the odor, which was the issue for the composting.
Right. And one of the things, and I know, I do know in our PUD document, any of the other tracks that have, that come before you will have to have specific site plans, so that facades will be addressed at that point, as to what the buildings would look like, where driveways would be, and all of that. You know, the drive, we have driveway locations for each track, and how many drives we can have, and I heard that from your, one of the previous hearings today about reducing the number of drives. We have two on, for track five, one on Britton, two on Britton Road, two on Kelly, one on track one, one on track two, one on track three, one on track four, so each time get at least one driveway except for the commercial corner. But again, each of these, the commercial corner, track one, or three, four, and five, will have to have site plans come before you when we know what those uses are. But really, the staff has supported the I-1 all along, and we tried to bring in the compost with it, but we realized that was one of the biggest issues. You know, one of the things about traffic, Kelly is in bad shape right now, it's two-lane. Kelly will be widened in the future to four-lane, they're doing that now, south of this project, widening Kelly, I think, at West, at Wilshire right now, and I'm not sure when this section is scheduled. But it is also a section-lined road, and so there will be, it will be widened eventually. And Britton Road, on the south, of course, is four-lane, and can accommodate a lot of traffic. So, in this area, there's gonna be a lot of more uses coming, offices where, you know, industrial uses, things, so there's gonna be traffic, so I'm not gonna say that there won't be. But section-lined road is built to handle a lot of traffic, and this is an employment reserve area, and so we're hoping this area creates a lot of jobs with whatever comes in here. You know, Kim Ray is happening to our east, so that's gonna increase a lot of traffic on Britton Road, and this, you know, these sites may be something that serves Kim Ray as a, as a service or a business that could complement what they do. So, again, section-lined roads were meant for a lot of traffic, so I think, but you'll see, like I said, you'll see site plans come before, for you, before we can build on those tracks, so.
Real quick, would you walk us through the uses that we are striking from these tracks? Is it just track one and track?
Just track one and two, we're striking the, let me get to that page, just so I can know.
There's animal waste processing?
Yeah.
And there's composting?
Well, the, it just, and the PUD says all uses in the I-1 light industrial use. It says additionally, use unit 8150.6, animal waste processing, which is bringing in the cow, the horse mule from anyplace else, so those go away. I think that's the only one that was, that would allow the composting.
Well, there's a separate one that says composting, indoor or outdoor.
That, we'll take that out, too.
That one?
Yeah, I just, I don't know the use unit numbers, I'm just saying, we will not be doing composting with this PUD. You know, one of the comments that was made to us by protesters, we had another meeting again last night at the site, and invited everybody we could, and one of the questions was, you know, do you have this going on somewhere else that we could look at, see what's going on? There's other areas that have talked to us now, at this point, that have welcomed what we wanna do, and, 'cause they want this for their city, so maybe that becomes our prototype, we get it up and running, and then come back someday, we don't know. At least, at least then, we'll have a area that we could look at. So, we're just thinking at this time, the unknown of what this is gonna be is just, let's just back off of that, and move forward with what staff has recommended, and what the, what the comprehensive plan calls for, the employment reserve area, so that's what we're doing. Did that answer your questions? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Well, shall we start with the comments?
Commissioners, other questions?
Okay.
We have a number of individuals who have signed up to speak. Stephen Schwartz.
Stephen Schwartz, 9401 North Kelly. I'm here representing the Kelly Lake Office Association, and we had previously come in opposition of the PUD. There's kind of a lot of questions out there now that we need to go back and look at, so I'm curious to hear a little bit more about what the applicant is proposing the uses. Some of our biggest concerns with the activities on the property were noise and dust, so since the last meeting, and I don't wanna go back and retread any of what we talked about last time, but I did some research on some of the potential equipment and the, and the noise levels, which again, in this setting, I don't think are really relevant, but that, we still wanna express our concern with noise and dust and debris from their activities. Thank you.
And those activities would have been specific to the composting?
Well, you know, I, my belief was these would be specific to creation of mulch, you know, the processing of tree limbs, and, you know, of that type of ways, not necessarily manure, but like forestry equipment, horizontal grinding equipment, tier four certified grinders. I met with some of the manufacturers from Vermeer, and asked specifically about some of this equipment and the impact on the people around it, so.
JJ, in, in light industrial, with the composting, the animal waste processing gone, is that allowed?
If they've, if they've removed those from the PUD, they wouldn't be allowed anymore.
Does that answer your concerns?
It does. And in terms of the noise, that was probably my biggest concern, the noise and the dust generated by those machines specifically was my biggest concern with, with this application.
Cool.
Thank you.
I just wanna be clear, are we composting at all on any of this track, or just none at all?
They removed, from both tracks that had composting, totally removed.
Okay, so.
No longer a part of this, this at all, is my opinion.
What's it gonna be? I mean, what are they gonna do?
Well, there's a number of use units still on track one and two, of course.
Right.
Maybe we could ask the applicant to describe a bit better about what the activities will be.
Kelly Work.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I, my name is Kelly Work. I was just gonna offer a suggestion that perhaps would be, save some of the time. I'm, I'm here, my name, my name again is Kelly Work, my address is 105 North Hudson Suite 304. I'm here representing the KOCTV Channel 5, which has their headquarters and operations just on the south side of Britton Road. And our suggestion would be if the applicant, I mean, a significant part of the focus of the opposition has clearly been relating to the animal waste processing and compost use, and if that, if the applicant is now proposing to remove that use from the PUD, then our suggestion would be they need to submit that document with that revision, so that it could be clear what exactly is now going to be proposed. There are other uses that are still included among the permitted uses that we have concerns about and would want to, to know more about and to probably express opposition to, including, for example, recycling operations that are one of the permitted uses on both track one and track two. So, that would still allow the kind of, you know, wood chippers and, you know, uses that are typically industrial-type uses. So, our suggestion would be they need to make, if they're gonna make this dramatic a change to the PUD, they need to do it in the document and allow everyone to, an opportunity to review what it is they're now proposing. They were proposing up to 45 acres of animal waste processing and composting out of the 102 acres that is the subject of this application. So, we're talking about a pretty significant departure from what is presently before the commission. So, our suggestion would be, let's make the amendment, let's, let us have an opportunity to review it, and then we can determine whether or not we still have objections to what is remaining.
To be fair, though, they haven't added any new uses.
Correct.
So, these are all in the existing request, right?
Which were all here last time, too.
Yeah.
Certainly, but my, I guess my point is, is that there are, I think the principal focus, as everyone is aware, has been on this animal waste processing, but that's not to take away from the fact that they've got a significant number of other uses that we have objections to. It's 102 acres of property, they are including other industrial uses that.
Can we, I mean, could we talk about them now, those items? The other concern?
Certainly, I just, my suggestion would be that they make the amendment, and then we'd like to see the document that the commission is considering and proposing to act on before you actually act on it.
I guess, I'm not trying to speak for the applicant, but it seems like the only changes are striking the animal waste processing and composting in track one and two.
If I may, I mean, him saying he'd like to see the document, they've had the document for two months, whatever, nothing's changing other than I'm striking that use. So, I just, I just don't feel like we need to come back, I'm gonna save some more time, I feel it's like we don't need to come back in December, a month and a half from now, and give them just another, I mean, okay, then what? You know, I believe we've made it pretty clean today of just saying, here's the uses that staff recommended we put in, something that staff would like to see in this area, and we've agreed, and that's what we put in front of you. So, there's really no other document would change, other than the, the striking those two uses, so.
Focus has always been, since day one, on the primary use, which was the sole focus of all of the opposition.
So, could you state your name and address?
I'm sorry, I'm David Bohannon, and I'm with Tower Lakes Owners Association, south of the property. And I agree with Mr. Work in that coming in at the last hour, I mean, we could have been notified prior to today's hearing that the PUD was being amended to drop the compost, which would have allowed everybody then the opportunity to study the secondary uses. The primary opposition has always been on the composting part of it, so I do think it's only fair, if you're gonna drop the overwhelming purpose of the acquisition and planning for this site, that it should be an amended PUD application or a new PUD application, and everyone should have ample time to study that document. And that's all we're asking for, instead of coming and saying, "Well, we're dropping the composting, so no one else is opposing anything else but that," well, everyone was opposing the composting for obvious reasons. And so, based on that, I think it's just, trying to shove this in real quick at the last minute is not the wisest approach to planning. I think that everybody that's an interested party that has property in the immediate area should have ample opportunity to review the rest of the PUD as it affects the surrounding properties, when the focus, to this point, has just been opposition of the composting facility. So, thank you.
Are you aware of the other permitted uses at this point? Is that what you're saying, is basically, 'cause again, these are not additional?
These are not additional.
Right.
These are basically, the other issues we did not focus on, because we were hyper-focused on, look, the main thing we don't wanna have here is the composting because of the reasons stated previously that I don't need to repeat. So, there's not been much study and much focus on the ancillary uses, other, only on the primary use. So, that's why I would plead of the planning commission that we have an amended PUD application filed that takes out all the composting, give everyone a chance to review it thoroughly, and then come back and let it be heard, and if there's no uses that anyone is opposed to, then we would have no problem.
Well, and as a developer yourself, correct?
Yes.
I mean, you understand that if they ask for, you know, a ruling today, we're entitled to it.
Sure.
So, I would love if, you know, you guys have those, if you understand the rest of the document, if you have the time.
Right.
That if we could talk about it today, that would be.
We could, we just, yeah, I'm just telling you that I personally have not actually reviewed the remainder of the document, because my focus, and I think the focus of all of the multiple people in here has been on the composting. Had we had advance notice, and we're not here to fight, we like the applicant, we think their use, that they proposed here is a good use, but just not in this location, I think they've agreed with that, with the opposition, we just would like to say, is there a chance to have ample time to review the ancillary uses? And if, if you wanna discuss them and think we can hash through those here today, you know, then so be it. I just wanted to speak my opinion. So, thank you.
How would this affect, and this was another issue, the traffic in and out with no composting? Brian, is it gonna be less, or, if you're not bringing in stuff, I'd assume it would be much less?
You know, it's hard to tell, it depends on what the I-1 use comes in, you know, if it's a food distribution company or whatever, again, they're section-lined roads. Now, I do want to, I know Mr. Bohannon was talking about, it would have been nice to known way ahead, until I talked to Mr. Hinkle in Ward 5 and told him what we found out from the school board this morning, we hadn't made that decision, so I talked to him in the hall, and went back out and talked to my client in the, in the foyer. So, and I, you know, I'm not ever gonna try to pull a fast one on you all, it's just the decision wasn't made until we knew what his decision was gonna be, and his was, his was based on the school, so.
It sounds like there's still a lot of people wanting more time?
I understand.
Are you guys willing to take a little bit more time?
I think the problem, I mean, the thing is, I think the problem, I mean, the thing is, we just heard from the previous hearing, is it's gonna go till December 13th at this point to do that. We would like to move forward. We have, there's gonna be six to eight weeks, I think, between now and City Council, I believe, I'm not sure when the dates are.
Yeah, November 8th, right?
Yeah, we've got, we've got the November date.
November 8th.
You guys can come back, just in a second.
Let me talk to my client a second.
My name is Mark Lester. I'm at 911 6 North Kelly, Oklahoma City. We are tenants in Tower Lakes Association. I want to thank the applicant for dropping the compost. Obviously, that was our biggest concerns. There's just two brief things I would like clarification on, in addition to the traffic question, is that I have written a letter to the applicant about this because I didn't feel like this body really represented the adjacent properties well last time. I thought our overriding concerns and interest were basically reduced to fear, and I thought that was somewhat insulting to us because we did have some legitimate interest in the quiet enjoyment and use of our property. And so I drafted a letter to the applicant. He's been very gracious in talking with us and meeting with us, so I'm grateful for that. But one of my concerns was it's light industrial, and this light industrial, the way I'm reading the code, that requires it to be all indoor. The permitted use that was allowed would provide permitted use for the waste, but light industrial is required to be all within an enclosed facility, so that's one of my concerns going forward, is if this is gonna still be light industrial, whatever that is, we need to be understanding that it's all going to be indoors, that that would be a variance outside of that. The application did not, previous application, or I guess the continuing one, did not provide for that. It provided for a special permit for the use, but not a variance for the condition of the use, which I felt was a requirement.
JJ might be able to speak to that.
I think I-3 would have been the appropriate use, which would have been, I think, a harder hurdle for the applicant to overcome, and I had a problem with that originally. I don't, and I wanted some clarification on that. Now, going forward, real quick before you answer that question, and then, and I'll be done, is that I'm not sure why we can't have a specific plan on every parcel. I think we're entitled to that opportunity. I don't think that the PUD going forward should be just as it is because it excludes parcel 1 and 2, which is a significant portion of the property, from that. I do agree with Mr. Work, this is a material change in the PUD, and in some ways, because of the potential use, there was no commitments from anybody else on any of these other tracks. Those uses actually slightly changed as we went through this process in order to accommodate the overlay on the comprehensive plan, I think it's ER, and some other things, and I think it would be prudent for us to know, you know, going forward, a specific plan for each of these tracks. And if JJ could answer my question, that'd be great.
The I-1 base zoning district of the PUD requires that all uses be indoors.
So does anything in the spud overrule that, that they put in, or is that...
I don't believe so, and it would have to be specifically written in the PUD for something to be outdoors.
Well, 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 everyone. Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Greetings to this illustrious group here today, and you great people out here. I am with the residents of Ward 7.
Mr. Washington?
Ma'am.
Which item are you addressing?
This is the one we're speaking, Ward 7. Spoken the last one, I didn't know which one it was, I gave it to the lady.
Are you addressing item number 7?
Yeah, it's in 18, it's in the number 18.
Well, you're out of order, sir. We're...
I have it up there. It says, is that the one?
We're addressing number 18.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
In Ward 7.
Well, you've signed up to address agenda item number 7.
No, 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 she, I guess she wrote that on, no, 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 I didn't write that, ma'am. I'm only concerned about this northeast side where I live, in northeast side of Oklahoma City, where I live, where this proposal is. I don't know who wrote, I didn't write 7 in there. 7 has been gone. Now, if I may. Again, I am with the residents of the northeast side of Oklahoma City. We do not, nor will we tolerate a disregard for the human lives as well as sensible intelligence that great people would have if we were to allow such an increase of dead dog waste or what have you. Now, let me ask you one of these things here. This has been going on now, according to what I'm reading, and I read quite well, from September 13th through September 27th, and now we have October 24th. Isn't that something? Evidently, something hasn't gone wrong, but it's continually, continually, continually been going on. So that means that citizens are not quite satisfied with what they're reading in this document and proposal, and neither is Michael Washington. I read it for the first time today, but when I went over and gone over a lot of things, immediately I stopped and I said, oh, Michael, this doesn't quite seem right here. Now, not only do they want to develop this land out on 99th Street or what have you, I, what is it, 120 acres, is that what I hear? My God, what are they planning here? Are they gonna be cloning someone or something? You know, this is a question I have. You know, you're already talking about you want to now suddenly strike this proposal here to have animals, what is it, reincarnated maybe? Let's just put it that way. But anyhow, I am opposing this because I'm a political activist for the northeast side of Oklahoma City. We already have enough dump waste, which is the extent of what this proposal will include. And again, US citizens need to recognize the people's voices over a finance of big company who wants, you know, establish something because they got money, not caring about, you know, the majority of residents, the traffic flow, the various other clutters that are gonna be going on.
Mr. Washington?
And I'm here to let them...
The applicant has requested to strike animal waste and compost on the...
I understand that, I understand that, but as the gentleman spoke before me, the two did, they, they should revisit something that they may have missed, and me too, for the first time since being here. I support that because the people have a way to know, and, no, let me tell you something. When he, when he came with that proposal, I almost jumped out of my skin over, I said, hold up, man, now you're gonna strike it? Why you want to strike it now? Because you knew in the first place, after people started arguing about it, it wasn't going anywhere fast. Okay? That's why I'm, no disrespect to you, sir, but I'm just letting you know. Let me, I'm getting ready clothes here. Are y'all ready for this? The people's voices, ma'am, and esteemed jurors, the people's voices must be heard. You cannot let a few dollars run the world, even though we're a capitalist society, a capitalist government. You cannot disregard the premises and wishes of the people who live in these areas. Now, Michael Washington, how the kind of money to live on 99th Street? I live way down on 23rd. But at the same time, I respect any and all people who have a right to peace of mind, to goodwill, to a humble and safe environment to live in without all of these distractions. And let me say, like Anna Schwarzenegger said, I'll be balked. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. The next person signed up to speak is Larry Davis.
Larry Davis, 2804 Southwest 121st Street. I own the building office complex, which is right across the street from 9900 North Kelly. We have approximately 375 state employees that work in that complex, and I, again, I'm kind of frustrated because I still hadn't, I didn't get notified of this meeting, I didn't get notified of you had a meeting last night or something, and so I'm still kind of in the dark, but I agree that we need to know more about what their plans are to change this zoning. The area all around there is, is business, and it's upscale office buildings, and, you know, we're having a big ChemRA deal come in. The, it just doesn't make sense that we don't know what is happening, and to turn that area into a industrial area will really change what's really been happening out there for the last 20 years, and people have put a lot of money into this, a lot of investment has gone on right in that small area, and if we don't know what they're gonna put in there, it could be anything, and then there goes our investment. So I oppose this, I think that they need to be more specific before you make your decision on the zoning.
Since several people are asking about the uses, should we have Brian come up and give us an overview of the uses that you are limiting to the PUD? I think you can summarize probably the uses that you've called out specifically that would be allowed in the PUD, and maybe that would help answer some of those questions.
I mean, the length, I mean, the list is, you know, we had a list that we submitted originally, we had, I believe we had what was not permitted first, and then staff came back and said, we want you to change those to the uses that are permitted, and that's what's in your document now. I mean, I could go through them, I don't know if I can give you a very good explanation as staff could as to what each of these uses mean, but there's quite a few. Now, one of the things that we can do that I'll go ahead and tell you, and originally, yes, Tracks 1 and 2, we're not gonna have a site plan because it was gonna have one building on it for, to serve the composting unit. We will, we'll bring a site plan back at the time we know what's gonna happen. This is, like you said, 102 acres, we don't really know, but that's what this PUD is about, here's the restrictions, what we're gonna do, here's we're gonna restrict driveways, but staff recommended, let's go for an R1, I mean, an I-1, and then we included some other, they told us what uses they thought would be appropriate, and we've added those to it. I will, you know, I will offer up, just to save a little more time, that I think the next meeting is November 8th. I would, we would be okay with continuing to the 8th, but I would ask, I mean, Mr. Bohannon knows where I am, Mr. Work knows where I am, that they bring, that we've had four meetings on-site, we hand-carried invitations, we mailed them, and we emailed invitations to the entire, and Mr. Washington didn't have an invitation because he doesn't live in the area, so he wasn't on the ownership list. So, anyway, we'll be, we will continue to November 8th, but I would ask that if whatever concerns they have, whatever uses they don't like to see in there, bring them to me. I think we've done our, we've done a pretty good effort of going out to the site four times now and meeting, and they all, again, they know where my office is, and they know me, we work together.
So anyone who may have spoken, I think Mr. Davis mentioned that he was not given notice, he can visit with you, I guess...
Absolutely.
To make sure that he, your, he has the right contact.
Absolutely. My address, my phone number, my email is on the front of the document, and he was on the ownership list, so we sent, he doesn't live where this site is, it's a building he owns, and I understand that, but his address on 121st was on the list. So, again, we delivered an address to the building, of course, he doesn't, he doesn't office there. So, again, my address, email, phone number's all on there, I'd be more than open to meet with them at my office anytime they want to talk, and here, you know, if they say, here's the four we don't like, it may be four that, you know what, we can do without. So, and I know that this was a last-minute change, but until I talked to Mr. Hinkle, we didn't, weren't for sure that we'd do this, but again, I'm not adding anything today, I can't. So if there's some other things they want to focus on, then let me know what those are, you know, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Sounds like we're gonna continue to November 8th?
I think we should probably still hear if there are any other speakers, any other opposition.
That's a good point.
Hello, I'm Greg Gilbert. I'm a CPA, and we have an office at 780 North Britton Road, which is just west of the property. I think that, well, I agree with the rest of the opposition that we should have detailed plans to look at, and, and I'm totally, this development is really inconsistent with what the area already has as far as development, as far as the offices and TV station, schools, churches. It's just, it's inconsistent. I'd like to have some clarification.
Brian, when you're coming back with your PUD, do you intend to address that with the exception to submitting the specific plan? Because if you've agreed to remove the single-family use, then you no longer would have to plat.
Right.
And so really, the requirement is that you would show a specific plan for all tracks except for single-family, which you're agreeing to delete, so therefore you would come back with a specific plan, correct?
On any tracks other than residential.
So maybe when you come back.
It may be an R2, it may be an R4, it may be R apartments, which we have...
Which you would have to plat.
And we will, yes, we agree to site plans when we know the specific use. I just don't want to present a conceptual plan now that may not be what we do. That's, I don't think that'll help anybody, but we do not have those specifics now, but we will in the future. So I just don't want you to think I'm coming back with a site plan, because it won't be, because I don't know what this...
I was actually talking about your exception to submit the specific plan for all tracks except...
We will do that except for residential.
If you'll modify that.
Yes.
We have about six more people who have signed up to speak, so if someone speaks ahead of you and you would be just repeating repetitious concerns, please consider that in your remarks. The next person signed up to speak is Christine McFashen.
I'll put my sign up under her address.
All right, thank you. Alan Trastunby.
Everything's under address.
All right, thank you, Alan. Amanda Moller. Amanda?
I'll speak six minutes later.
All right, thank you, Amanda. Pascal or Delores Ottley. All righty. Brent Hensley.
We're fine.
Thank you. Linda Byford with Chapporal Energy.
Hi, Ashley.
Linda? All right.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Byford. I work for Chapporal Energy, which has an address at 701 Cedar Lake Boulevard. We are across Kelly from this, from this proposed use, and my only comment is, you had, you had just asked whether there would be specific information when we came back in November. The listing here of approved uses, even if you take out composting, if you take out animal byproduct manufacturing, is still varied, and he's basically saying, trust us, we'll do something that's consistent, and my only comment is, we'd like to see more specifically than this list of approved uses, which if you just talk about light industrial, could be very broad. Before we change the zoning, we'd like to see exactly, not generally, but specifically, what that proposed use is going to be. When you guys considered item number 14 on the agenda, the PUD 1696, you specifically told that applicant, come, at the corner of Council and Memorial, come back when you can tell us what it is that you're doing. That's what we're asking for here, not a laundry list of possible things that we might do someday, but specifics. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
The one, the one thing I want to be cognizant of when we come back next meeting is that the majority of the properties that I think are here being represented, I mean, there's only a few that are, that are straight base zoning, where it's O2, a lot of these other ones are PUDs as well, and you might look back at your own PUDs and spuds and see what uses were allowed, because I had imagined that a lot of these same uses are allowed in yours, and I just, you know, let's, let's be realistic about how these developments are done.
Well, I might offer up an explanation, too, about how the process is done for zoning. So in any base zoning district, like light industrial, or an industrial zoning district allows a range of industrial uses to be developed within that by right. A planned unit development is a specialized type of zoning district where you can name specific uses that you can pick from different types of zoning districts to be compatible with the development that's around it, that is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. What the process is, is that this planned unit development comes forward and lists any specific uses that would be allowed by the zoning. Then, if planning commission determines, and City Council determines that those uses would be appropriate in that location, the process is that you would come back in with a specific plan at the time that you're proposing which use or which property comes in to develop. And then you can see the site plan, the layout, the elevations, all of those requirements for the specific plan, and that is a separate... for the specific plan, and that is a separate approval. So what we're looking at is if these uses would be compatible with the surrounding districts at this point in the process of zoning. Just wanted to make sure that everybody understands the two-step between the zoning district and the specific plan.
Can I try to get some clarification, because I'm still the newbie? Okay, so in layman's terms, it's already zoned and approved for these uses.
This is the process to zone.
To zone for those, these specific uses. They've already agreed that composting and the animal waste cannot, processing cannot occur there. So in the event, which we are not going to do today, but if we were to vote today, all we would be saying is that these are the permitted uses, then before they could actually make use of that property for any reason, they would have to come back to us for specific approval about how the property would be used.
If I may address just one of the comments, I'm not asking to just say, just trust us, and I didn't ask you, I didn't say that. So, again, if there's any uses that the people don't like, and as Aubrey just explained, they know where I am, let's talk, and then when we know, we have a user for track one, two, three, or whatever, and we can have some specific site plan, that's what we'll come back before you, it's not use, it'll be site plan at that point. Here's our driveways, here's where our buildings will be, here's where our parking is, here's our landscaping, here's the details of what we want to do, but this is step one, is to get the uses approved. If there's a use that someone doesn't like, let's talk, and that's, you know, so.
Kelly, did you have any other remarks?
No, we're, we're good with the continuous, the conditions, the climate, the, we're continuing to go.
Okay.
Well, that, the recycling of animal waste is specific, in my opinion. So there's no zoning request going to be made by the applicant then? It's going to, he's going to stay with the existing zoning? Is that? No, it's, it's still, it's still a zoning request. It's just eliminating that particular use. Okay, which was specific? Which was specific. So now we're going to wait for the specifics? Well, the, if, if you, do you have a copy of the? No, I mean, I know it's online, but I, no, I didn't. Their, their document includes all of the other potential uses as well. There's a, there's a long list for each tract, so you might get, get the document and become familiar with those potential. It just struck me as odd that he had one specific use detailed and then no other use. So they're all specifically? Oh, they are.
If you all will go to the city's website and pull up this zoning item, you can look at the staff report, you can look at these uses, and the city's municipal code is available online, uniqueode.com, and each one of these uses listed for each tract has a definition in the zoning code that you could look up that further explains what's allowed to be developed under those uses.
Okay.
And that would be very helpful, I think, for your conversation that you're going to have between now and the next meeting.
Is there anyone else to be heard on this item?
I would like to move that we continue the consideration of this item on November 8th.
We have a motion and a second. Let's see. Oh, you need this. You probably need, you need this.
Sword and.
I don't think so. I don't know what it was. So, where are we here? We are, the, the items 20, 21, and 22 have all been continued. Additional items, communications reports, planning commission committees, of which there are none, planning commission members. Any comments?
I do have one thing I want to say. When I came back in from item 18, I noticed that my light was on, and I did not participate in that vote, nor did I participate in the hearing, I just want to make sure the record's clear on that particular point.
Yes, let the record be very clear on that point. Commissioner Hensley.
Okay.
Commissioner Powers and Commissioner Cravens did not participate in that vote.
Okay, thank you.
Planning departments?
Just wanted to let everybody know that the development code update next phase will be moving forward in the next couple of months. We will be issuing an RFP to solicit for a consultant to help us carry that through the next several years, so we'll be starting to initiate that planning commission committee. So when we call on it, we can get regular reports of activities that have happened from the committee participating through the process.
What is it? Since I've volunteered to be on that, what, what are, this is, this is my first, like, subcommittee, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
When will it meet? Is there any knowns about what kind of process?
We'll decide. Yes, I think that committee can, ought to be determined. Can talk about that, about at what level, and how frequent, and when the meetings are, and the roles and responsibilities. Each committee is formed for a special project or a special task, so that's something that we can develop based on kind of the scope and the overview of what we're going to try to accomplish within the first year of this Phase Two. And I also just want to let everybody know that based on the head count I know today and the number of people who have recused themselves for 18, if everybody shows up next time, we will have five people to vote on that case. That means if everybody else who is not recused shows up.
Okay.
I counted you. Okay.
And that's on November 8th. I'm, I will be absent anyway, so.
And I, yeah, counted that in.
I guess the, the one variable there is whether the, yeah, is whether the, the removal of the compost use unit will affect the protest and therefore the need to recuse. We'll see. We'll see how that plays out.
Right.
Okay, development services? No? Muse counselor? Oh, this is going swimmingly. Citizens to be heard? Other business adjournment?
Okay.
Motion second to adjourn. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.